Did you ever wonder how all those clock sounds were made in the beginning of time by Pink Floyd? Or what was going on when Kurt Cobain wrote Nirvana's Smells Like Teen Spirit? I'm Jandelaine, host of the Behind the Song Podcast. Join me for each episode digging into classic rock's most interesting songs and the history behind them. You might just find a new revelation in the music you've heard all your life. Check it out wherever you get your podcasts and on the Behind the Song YouTube channel. And if you like it, hit subscribe.
Hey Garage Logic fans, Mishki here slipping in ever so briefly to mention that I have a podcast that comes out every Wednesday and every Friday, twice a week now. The show is pretty much about everything you care about and are interested in and need in your life and want to know more about. I tailored the darn thing specifically to your liking. I tailored it to your loves, to your true passions. That took a long time. I'm spent. You know what I'm saying? Absolutely wasted.
Josh Arnold Investment Consultant brings you Garage Logic Podcast number 1,615, September 9, 2025. 95 degrees on this day in 1947. That was a really warm year. I noted a number of records over the course of the summer.
Are you calling it a morning record?
No, that would be the 38 degrees we saw in 1883. And I don't know what time of the day that was. Call Josh Arnold at 952-925-5608 for a free 48-minute consultation.
Hail the flashlight king.
Hail you.
And now from the mayor's office above the boathouse on the east shore of Spoon Lake, it's Garage Logic with Chris Reivers manning technology corner, Kenny Olson from the Krabby Coffee Shop, John Height in the newsroom, and of course, the rookie. Here is your flashlight king, fireworks commissioner, and the keeper of common sense, your mayor, Joe Souchere.
Our own staff geologist, Tracy, Tracy?
Yeah, would she change her name?
What the hell's her name?
Stacy.
Stacy. Weighs in a decent sized shaker off the coast of Oregon. There have been three aftershocks in the four plus range since this earthquake last night. They had a 5.8. I wish something had happened, not, I mean, an earthquake.
Devastation.
No, no, no. Let me rephrase, let me rephrase that. I wish something that would hap, would happen that would, would unite the, the public in some togetherness of some sort. For example, but an earthquake would be the wrong thing to hope for because that results in too much death and devastation.
Nice tsunami.
Well, it does if you're in one of the sand countries where they make their houses out of paper mache. I mean, here you might survive. But we now have a new round of testimony before the House on UFOs. This isn't last year or the year before. We have a new round and it's military veterans and whistleblowers are appearing this morning, right now.
Okay, whistleblowers.
Before a House Oversight Committee to testify about the unidentified anomalous phenomenon. The hearing is focusing on the Pentagon's disclosures about UFOs. The American people deserve maximum transparency from the federal government. Well, I don't ever expect that. On the sightings, acquisitions, and examinations and whether they pose a threat to American safety, said Representative Anna Paulina Luna, a Republican from Florida who chairs the committee's task force on the declassification of federal secrets.
What?
I think if I was in Washington, I'd like to be on that one.
That would be a cool.
That would be pretty cool. It began at 11:00 AM, no, 10:00 AM Eastern, which would have been what? 9:00 AM our time.
How difficult do you think it is to try to get into that office just to maybe deliver a package or something because it's full of secrecy?
That's the only information I have on this. I wish they'd come up with a whopper. I wish the large unidentified space thing would hover over the United States and the guy would open the sliding door, like a patio door. And he'd have a megaphone and just tell us how doomed we all are unless we get our act together because things aren't going well.
Do you think that we in fact would get our act together?
I think that would be the kind of thing that would scare even stupid people because they could see it and think, uh-oh.
I have my doubts.
Well, you know what, boys? You're even worse off than I am.
Joe, my new motto credo is everything is a lie.
I'm not going to disagree with you, but which is why I want this large unknown being in a large craft to settle right above the earth. And the guy opens a sliding door. He walks on his little deck. He's got the megaphone. He said, you people are really screwed up.
You done. You done.
You done?
Again, Joe.
What's that, John?
That is the.
The day?
The earth stood still. That is the entire plot of this film from 1954 starring Michael Rennie.
Look, it's got the bad robot too. Look at that thing. Hold that up, Johnny.
The craft hovered above the earth?
It, yeah.
And this guy came to the door?
And then it landed and this guy came out and then Michael Rennie, who was the head of the aliens, told them they better get their act together and get rid of nuclear weapons and get rid of, you know.
That robot will be down with one punch. It seems to me pretty obvious that some sort of very advanced society existed long before this current generation.
On earth or elsewhere?
No, here on earth, completely wiped out. And the only evidence we have are a couple of pyramids and sphinx.
You got a lot of evidence in South America.
Yeah, something happened.
You know why I'm in this mood?
Why?
Because you've been hanging out with me. Because I've come across some remarks by George Washington and they're, they're beautiful. And in his farewell address, he essentially might as well have been giving it this year.
Really?
We're going to mark the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence next year.
I hope it doesn't get stolen.
Followed by the 250th anniversary of George Washington's farewell address in 20, oh, that, the 250th farewell address celebration will be 2046. Washington's farewell address warned less about foreign entanglements and more about domestic dangers like partisanship, public debt, and manipulative leaders in 20, in 1746. He feared that political factions could be exploited by ambitious and unprincipled men. We haven't seen that, have we?
Wasn't it 1798?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Or 96 or something like that. Yeah, 96. 96, yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let me see if I can read the exact remarks. The revolution, of course, began with the inspirational language of Thomas Jefferson, who wrote most of the, who wrote most of the declaration. It ended with somber warnings from Washington, the nation's first president. After chairing the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia and serving eight years as president, Washington announced in a newspaper essay that he would not seek another term. He wished to return to his home in Mount Vernon. The essay that was printed was known as his farewell address. And he, he, his confidence was waning in, in America's ability to pull itself out of a tailspin. I, I, I'm just shocked at that. Washington's farewell address is famous for the admonition to steer clear of permanent alliances and to resist the temptation to entangle our peace and prosperity in the toils of European ambition. Hmm. Important as those warnings are, they are not the main topic of Washington's message. During the four decades that I have taught the farewell address, who wrote this? That would be a fellow named Robert A. Strong at the University of Virginia. During the four decades that I have taught the farewell address in classes on American government, I have urged my students to set aside the familiar issues of foreign policy and isolationism and to read the address for what it says about the domestic challenges confronting America. Those challenges included partisanship, parochialism, excessive public debt, ambitious leaders who could come to power playing off our differences, and a poorly informed public who might sacrifice their own liberties to find relief from divisive politics. Good God in heaven. You're just seeing that today. Washington's address lacks Jefferson's ideal. Instead, it's a realistic assessment that calculates costly political mistakes. Partisanship, according to Washington, was the primary problem for the American republic. Isn't that fascinating? You know, this Washington, I don't know if you know this or not, but he must have been a pretty sharp cookie.
I think so.
Partisanship is the primary problem for the American public, according to our man George Washington. And I copied his letters here, but the print came out too small to read. Partisanship serves always to distract public councils and enfeeble the public administration, he wrote. Partisanship agitates the community with ill-founded jealousies and false alarms, kindles the animosity of one part against another, foments occasionally riot and insurrection, and can open the door to foreign influence and corruption.
Wow.
Though political parties, Washington observes, may now and then answer popular ends, they can also become potent engines, this is hard to read, by which cunning, ambitious, and unprincipled men will be enabled to subvert the power of the people and to usurp for themselves the reins of government, destroying afterwards the very engines which have lifted them to unjust dominion. Washington's fear that partisanship could lead to the destruction of the Constitution and to the rule of ambitious and unprincipled men was so important to him that he felt compelled to repeat the warning more than once in his farewell address. And despite what you may think, I'm, I'm not thinking of just Trump here. We, we are, we are faced by a very poorly serving public class, no matter what side of the aisle you are.
Yeah, it didn't start, didn't start two years ago.
This is, this is a crying out of warning from George Washington about what ultimately he saw happening to the country. And it's happening. What, what were these fools? Who are these fools except ambitious, unprincipled characters? Whether it's Trump or Biden or Kamala Harris or Governor Cockwamble, they're all unprincipled. They're all without character. They're soulless. You could take it down to city council levels. My God, it's just.
We're inundated.
And the partisanship does allow you to play these ridiculous emotional games. I think George called them false alarms.
Are you separating the voters then from the politicians? Wouldn't you say all voters and all citizens of the United States are to blame?
Absolutely.
As a teenager, Washington compiled over 100 rules for social interaction styled the Rules of Civility.
The second time Washington, the Rules of Civility was a, a more Towles novel. I bet that's where he took it.
Probably.
The second time Washington took it up, he said that the disorders and miseries of partisanship may gradually incline the minds of men to seek security and repose in the absolute power of an individual. Wow. Sooner or later, he wrote, the chief of some prevailing faction, more able or more fortunate than his competitors, turns this disposition to the purpose of his own elevation on the ruins of public liberty. So why not outlaw parties and reign the dangers of, reign in the dangers of partisanship? Washington observed that that is not possible. The spirit of party is inseparable from our nature, having its root in the strongest passions of the human mind. Americans naturally collect themselves into groups, factions, interests, and parties because that's what human beings do. It's easier to be connected to local communities, states, or regions of the country than to a large and diverse nation, even though that large and diverse nation is, by Washington's assessment, essential to the security and success of all. The central problem in American politics is not a matter of devious leaders, foreign intrigue, or sectional rivalries, things that will always exist. Here's the answer. The problem, Washington warned, lies with the people. By their nature, people divide themselves in those divisions used and abused by individuals and enterprising minorities. Wow.
Okay, so.
Let's wrap it up and shut the door.
I have a question about that.
Well, let me finish this.
Okay, all right.
Within certain limits, Washington acknowledged, that's probably true, but even if the battles between political parties sometimes have a useful purpose, Washington worried about the excesses of partisanship. Partisanship is like a fire. It demands a uniform vigilance to prevent its bursting into flame, lest instead of warming, it should consume. Where is America today? Warm by the fires of partisanship or consumed by the bursting of flames? Washington suggested that provocative question more than two centuries ago in September 19th, 1796, the question remains worth asking. Robert A. Strong, emeritus professor of politics, Washington and Lee University, senior fellow, University of Virginia. He does not work for, consult, owns shares in, or receives funding from any company or, or organization that would benefit from this article and has disclosed no relevant affiliations beyond their academic appointment. These words come to you from the conversation under a Creative Commons license. Thank you. Maybe, maybe his classes do not reflect the failed academy. Maybe his classes were, would, I envy the people who take his classes, is what I'm trying to say. I bet they're pretty interesting.
So when he was talking about the citizenry, George Washington, that is, what, what are the responsibilities of just us, the five of us sitting here right now, to follow the example of these civilities as expressed by George Washington? What are we to do to improve this situation?
My answer has been to encourage running for office garage logicians. By garage logicians, I mean people who are not necessarily dedicated to partisanship, but see wisdom by taking a little of this and a little of that and seeing what works in expressing, expressing wisdom in the way they would lead. We are led now in the Twin Cities, for example, only by one side of the aisle, only. There's no, there's no ands, ifs, or buts about it.
You are being, you and us are being judged right now by people because you or we, when I say you, they think that all of us hate Trump or on the other hand, hate walls. How are we to change that? How are we to bring both sides together? I don't see it happening, Joe. What I'm saying is this, it's futile. I mean, what he said is awesome, but it's too late.
Well, I wish I wasn't pinned with hate, although I can understand where it's come from. I would prefer to say I'm disgusted.
In, in what?
The behavior of walls or Trump is disgusting. It's, it's not, it's as, as Peggy Noonan wrote, it's not what we do.
If you ask me, both parties, Republican, Democrats, are just simply wings of an evil flying monkey and we're doomed no matter what. What do you think the turning point was? Do you think it was Bush gore?
No, no. You have to make a decision about this, this concept of being doomed or not. I mean, we, we've used it as a tagline. We've thrown it around somewhat comically. Oh, we're doomed. I, I don't know, are we?
Tell me why we're not. I don't know. It feels like it. Tell me why we're not. Give me some hope. That's what I'm asking.
I can't because here's what I see when I look at the horizon. I see no political hero presenting himself or herself. I see no one rising to the challenge of stitching us back together of, I don't even know at what point would you try to return the country to? At what point were we a more noble people? You go back far enough, we weren't noble because of slavery. You come further forward, we weren't noble enough because of imperialism. You go, where are we going to settle on, on an America that is civil, honest, and representative of, of, of good people?
I think we were noble and we still are noble where government exists in the least amount, where we have to rely on ourselves and each other. Which party do you think is capable of coming out with a candidate that says just that?
I would love to say the Republican Party, but I won't. There's no evidence that the Republican Party, the Republican Party, like the Democrats, is not a party I recognize.
So independent.
And the Democratic Party is not a party I recognize.
And locally here in this state, I mean, a Republican has as much chance of getting elected here as I do of pitching for the Twins.
So all of this has, all of this has me thinking, Joe, what you say about Epstein and how it's such a turnoff that you're forced to ignore it, right?
Yeah.
That's where I'm at with politics. It's such a turnoff right now that I want to do everything I possibly can to ignore it, but then the result, that's what they want.
Well, I don't think it's, I don't think it's too strong a statement to say we've been manipulated into turning it off.
Perfect way of putting it. Thank you.
We've been manipulating to just say, the hell with it. What time's the Twins game on?
That's what they want. That's exactly what they want.
What I want, well, I don't need one yet.
But if I did.
But if I did, I'm calling, I'm calling Precision Door for a new garage door. Get this done before winter. We're going to have a, see the weather forecast? Man, we're warming up again. Something fierce. It's going to be great. So schedule a free onsite new door estimate with one of the garage door designers from Precision Door. They have models for every budget and a better, if you don't need a door, this is a hell of a deal. They got a new, they have a noisy door tune-up special. Because see the noises? They're warning you about something. So get ahold of Precision Door. It's a special for 149 bucks. It's a $300 value. You get a 25-point safety inspection, diagnostic, full garage door tune-up, rollers replaced with ultra-quiet rollers, a value of close to 300 bucks. Get ready for the cooler weather ahead. Annual maintenance reduces future wear and breakdowns. You don't want to come out there on January 10th and it's 48 below and your garage door doesn't work. Precision Door. Get ahold of them at precisiondoormn, one word, precisiondoormn.com, or call Precision Door at 612-263-6985 to schedule your free onsite new door estimate or book a noisy door tune-up special.
Reivers here once again for my guy, Mr. Money Talk, Josh Arnold. Does thinking about retirement make you uncomfortable? Well, sometimes the anxiety from wondering if you've saved enough can be overwhelming. But what if I told you that you could ease those tensions in just 48 minutes? Well, Mr. Money Talk is going to be able to sit down with you and get you on the right track for your financial future. Josh has navigated it all when it comes to uncertain market and economic conditions, and he'll always provide straight talk, never sugar-coated advice on how to reach the finish line with your retirement goals. Don't let your financial worries give you an ulcer or keep you from calling Josh right now. His 48-minute no obligation consultation could be just what you need to feel better about your future. Call Josh today at 952-925-5608 and set up your free, yes, free 48-minute no obligation consultation. That's 952-925-5608.
Investment services offered by Josh Arnold Investment Consultant LLC, a security investment advisor. Past performance is no guarantee of future results. All investments involve risk. All comments and opinions are Josh Arnold's and do not constitute investment advice.
Chris Reivers is a paid endorser.
Football is finally back and Underdog is the best place to make picks and win money all season long. Play with as little as $1 and you just pick whether your favorite players will go higher or lower on stats like touchdowns, receiving yards, and lots more. This year, I'll probably stick with some of my favorite players like Josh Jacobs of the Packers. He helped me win money last year by usually going higher on yards rushing. I'll be looking for him to again go higher on rushing yards. It's easy to pick and it makes watching the games that much more fun. Download the app today and sign up with promo code GARAGE to score $50 in bonus funds when you play your first $5. That's promo code GARAGE. Millions of fans have already won billions making picks on Underdog. Will you be next? Underdog, promo code GARAGE. Make picks, win money.
Must be 18 plus, 19 plus in Alabama and Nebraska, 19 plus in Colorado for some games, 21 plus in Arizona, Massachusetts, and Virginia, and present in a state where Underdog Fantasy operates. Terms apply. See assets.underdogfantasy.com/web/play and get terms underscore DFS underscore dot HTML for details. Offer not valid in Maryland, Michigan, Ohio, and Pennsylvania. Concerned with your play? Call 1-800-GAMBLER or visit www.ncpgambling.org. In New York, call the 24/7 Hope Line at 1-877-8HOPENY or text HOPENY467369.
It's the end of the world as we know it, and he feels fine. Joe Souchere.
Well, this was weird. I was on the phone with Stephen, the chief roaster there at customroasting.net. Last week at some point, when a GLer named Donnie strolled in to pick up a bag of freshly roasted beans. Now, Donnie had a great idea, great, a great idea for showing up. He was going to a friend's cabin for the weekend and instead of buying the usual, you know, case of Bush Light, he decided to pick up some fresh roasted coffee beans for the gang to enjoy all weekend. He knows what's up. There's nothing better than starting the day at a buddy's cabin with fresh roasted coffee from customroasting.net. You can do the same thing. All you have to do is order it online. And if you're near Buffalo, Minnesota on a weekday, pick it up in person. Johnny Hyde even did that. And if the timing is just right, you might be able to take a little tour and see the fancy convection roaster that Stephen does all his good work on. Convection Heat does a much better job at roasting than the old Fire Roasters. Hop on that website, you'll get a feel for the goings on there at Custom Roasting. Check out the GL Starter Pack or dive right in and order up your favorite. I'm going to, I'm going to span my horizons next time. I'm going to try the Italian blend. I've had it for other companies. I want to see what Custom Roasting and their Italian blend, how it stacks up. And I like this one, the Scandinavian blend. Just when I heard that word, Scandinavian blend, I thought, that's a 4:00 PM coffee, something when you just need a little bump at the end of the day. And sure enough, their description says specialty roasted beans from Mexico blended with our lightly roasted beans from Brazil for a smooth finish with earthly tones and a hint of dark chocolate. Doesn't that sound like a 4:00 PM chocolate coffee to you?
Yes.
Yeah, that sounds perfect. Customroasting.net. You're getting fresh roasted coffee made from the finest sourced beans on the planet, not something that is spent months in a truck and on a back room and on shelves. It's a great cup of coffee at a reasonable price. Customroasting.net.
Are you going to publicly acknowledge the apology you had for me off air?
Was it an actual apology?
Well, I think it was an acknowledgement.
If you're offended? I'm always looking for ammunition to make fun of you, cut you down, humiliate you in public. So I asked Stephen, I said, this guy I work with, he claims the, the best way to make a pot of coffee is with very, very cold water. And Stephen goes, yeah, I don't know. That makes a lot of sense. It's obviously has to be warm, brewed hot. And so then Stephen did some extra research and turns out.
I'm right. The colder, the better.
I was wrong. You were right. Why is that?
We don't know.
I know, but we need a new topic here, so let's move right on.
The Minneapolis City Council has authorized legal action against a property owner on Lake Street who was allowed a homeless encampment on his property. He's called a real estate developer. His name is Sabri. I'll get you his name here at some point. But he's allowed dozens of people to stay on an empty lot that he owns in the Longfellow neighborhood. He's racked up 15 grand in fines for public health citations, but he won't pay them. His name is Hamudi Sabri. He said he won't pay those fines until he's presented with a court order. And he said, there's nothing the city can do to make him close off his property from people who need a place to sleep. On Monday, the council voted six to four to authorize legal action against Sabri. They took up the vote after Jacob Fry called a special session for the council to discuss the lawsuit. vote after Jacob Fry called a special session for the council to discuss the lawsuit. Uh, true compassion means safe shelter, basic sanitation, healthy living conditions, none of which are present at this encampment. Today's action gives us another tool to both address these unsafe conditions and safeguard nearby residents, students, and businesses, Fry said. However, it was not a smooth process in the council chambers. It followed more than two hours of closed-door discussion and another hour of deliberation in public in a conversation that struck at wider differences over the city's approach to addressing homelessness. Chugtie, Asia Chugtie, she, she gave an answer that really sums up everything you need to know about the likes of her, along with, uh, Jason Chavez. He voted against taking legal action against the fellow. He would prefer that the fellow continue to house the homeless. Chugtie won't vote for it. Uh, Arin Chowdhury won't vote, vote for it, and neither will Elliot Payne. So Chavez, Chugtie, Chowdhury, Elliot Payne voted to, let's not sue this guy. Let's let him just live there. Voting in favor of getting, getting this taken care of were Andrea Jenkins, Michael Rainville, Latricia Vitale, Linnea Palmisano, Emily Kosky, Jamal Osman. Three other council members, and I know one of them is Jeremiah Ellison, were not present at the time of the vote.
Oh, interesting.
Okay, so what do we learn here? I want to read you what, uh, Chugtie said. If, I'm reading an MPR story about this. They seem to have the most thorough story. Uh, Sabri, the owner of the property, he, he said, you're just putting on a political theater at the expense of Real Solutions. This vote is a setback, he said. But it also shows the urgency of building a plan that treats people with dignity instead of pushing them from block to block. Oh, you can't fault Sabri for thinking that, can you? Uh, but Chud, uh, Chuggie, Chug, what's your name? Chugtie.
Chugtie.
Chugtie said, humanity's not lawsuits.
Oh, my gosh. Shut up.
In which I, she might as well be, have been bellowing at that bear to quit destroying her kayak. Well, the, the statement is so full of folly that it's hard to break it down and point out why she's so foolish. I mean, lawsuits are human in nature. They develop between humans. They are humanity. Sometimes, Chugtie, they, they make things correct. And, uh, Jason Chavez, he was, he's got the same deal going. So I don't know what's gonna happen. It's on 28th and Lake Street. I don't know the answer. I wish I had the answer. Uh, but it is dangerous. I mean, on the one hand, you, you're kind of rooting for the property owner. It's his property.
Uh, yeah.
On the other hand, you've got to root for the civic contract, the civil contract between us all, in which we should be guaranteed, uh, uh, the safety of not having schoolkids accidentally poking themselves with an abandoned needle.
There's trash everywhere there. The place is a mess.
Uh, human waste can carry disease, and you, you need to keep this under control. That's what an organized, functioning city does. Jason Chavez, Chugtie, uh, whoever else vote, who else voted for this? Here's, let me get back to that. Uh, it's important to note, uh, who voted for it? Uh, Chowdhury, Chugtie, Elliot Payne, Jason Chavez. Wasn't there one other one?
Um, hold on. Let me find it again. I just had it. Uh, council members Rainville, Vitale, Jenkins, Palmisano, and Kosky, and Osman voted to approve a lawsuit.
Right.
Elliot Payne, Chugtie, Chavez, Chowdhury voted no.
Right. And three were absent, including-
Wonsley Ellison and Cashman were gone.
Yeah. But by voting no, what you learn about Chowdhury, Chugati, Chugtie, uh, Elliot Payne, and there was one more, Jason Chavez, what you learn is they do not necessarily function with the civil contract in mind. Their, their ideology precludes them from worrying about fulfilling civil obligations. Their obligations are to the oppressed only, even if they have to invent them. So there, there's, there's not a chance in hell that Chowdhury, Chugtie, Elliot Payne, and, uh, Chavez have any interest at all in running a tight ship in terms of cleanliness, orderliness, law and order, drug use, homelessness. That's not in their, that's not in their thinking. What's in their thinking is that these are people who deserve to live on that corner as much as anyone. And in, and ironically, their thinking in this case is aided and abetted by the private property owner. So they have that leg to stand on, which serves them well in their opposition. The ones who voted for the lawsuit are serving the public.
Hmm.
The ones who voted against the lawsuit, uh, against bringing a lawsuit are not serving the public.
There's one thing missing here.
Besides Ellison?
Nobody's serving the homeless.
Right.
Nobody has a solution for the problem. I mean, uh, the mayor has this really beautiful, lovely statement. True compassion means safe shelter, basic sanitation, and healthy living conditions, none of which are present at this encampment. Are you going to provide those, those things for these people, Mayor? No, you're not. All you're doing is turning them loose. There, there's no winner here, Joe.
I know. And I don't know, uh, you know, back in the old days, when you, when Grandma put an apple pie on the windowsill, the bums came along and stole the apple pie. You know, the hobos came along. Uh, but they were, they've been romanticized throughout time, and we don't know what it was like. But we didn't have this, these homeless encampments did not exist prior to us being broken. They didn't exist 15 years ago.
And don't get me wrong, GLers, it's bad. I see these guys wasted out of their mind every day, playing on the freeway, on the freeway as cars go by at 70, every single day, both downtowns. So I, I'm not, all I'm saying is, nobody's offering a solution.
But keep in mind, this is the same city government that continues to not know what to do with George Floyd Square. We, we, it's been more than five years, and the latest is, the city has spent more than $3 million on a planning process that's gone nowhere. They can't get their work done. Their, their ideologies are so diametrically opposed, most of them. They don't know how to function as functioning adults running a big city. They can't get anything done. You think they're gonna get the homeless solved when they can't even figure out how to let a car go through 38th and Chicago?
You know what? That's a beautiful example.
They can't get it done.
You're right.
In more than five years, Fry's office said the city has spent 3.41 million on planning, dedicated 19,100 staff hours, and has had over 25,000 community interactions to determine how to utilize the space. My ask, Fry said, is for the council to have no more delays. Well, good luck, Jacob. Good luck. The Minneapolis City Council is pushing for a pedestrian mall. That overrides a mayoral veto. This would shut down a portion of the road, but Minnesota state law prevents that if more than 50% of adjacent property owners objected the plan. And they have, to which the council has ignored them. Because on a county, you want to know why?
I do.
They can't get anything done. They don't know how to function. They're adult children. It's really important to ground yourself in the community on any of this discussion because who you're including in community has a really profound impact on how you're thinking about this project, said city council president Elliot Payne, who are, you are absolutely full of BS. You have just said boilerplate nonsense that you must have read off one of your grant applications. This means nothing. It means nothing. Payne voted in favor of the pedestrian mall. Study. And he believes, and so we don't know his time limit, he believes the community hasn't fully healed from George Floyd. Well, how long you gonna give him, Elliot?
And how do you know?
Maybe it's just another five years and people will be healed up pretty well? 10 years? Uh, by December, they apparently have a deadline to complete the technical work to decide whether a pedestrian mall will be successful. That could only be another million or two to figure that out.
It's just money.
And all that is, is gonna determine, they're calling it, the technical aspect. So that means what? They're go, I, wait.
Yep.
Uh, Five Eyewitness News asked, uh, this Elliot Payne character if the money used so far is well-spent. Well, uh, of course, it has not been. He said, we got to go back to the cause and effect. And when you're looking at the effect and calculated, calculating that 3-point-whatever million dollars, that's not inclusive of the total cost of having an unaccountable police department. Well, he's, he's mixing two things there.
What a moron.
Have nothing to do with each other. He should not be serving the city of Minneapolis.
No.
Uh, a recent city staff report brought to light new concerns about a pedestrian mall. One of them is the fact that as many as 550 vehicles would be diverted daily to other residential streets. Look, uh, so back to homeless. Do you think the city can solve the people who are living on Sabri's property? They cannot. They will not. They can't solve a five-year-old problem that should, shouldn't have lasted more than a month.
Can they solve any problems?
No.
What have they got done?
Well, I've asked this question before. Will somebody explain to me how your progressive, Marxist progressivism, your mysterianism has made life better in the Twin Cities?
They wouldn't be able to answer that.
That's why I want Jason Chavez on the air. I'll take any of them. I'll take Chugtie. I'll take Chowdhury. But any one of them, I would love to have a decent conversation. Could you please explain to us how your thinking makes this a better city?
We're feeding kids.
And provide us with proof. That's what I want.
And we're giving up. We're never, uh, we're never going to have Cockwamble on the show because, and he won't come on, and he'd be very smart not to. Because my very first question to Cockwamble would be, how lucky are you that you're not in jail? So I, I don't think-
Be a decent iceberg.
I think that would be something he would wish to avoid. Uh, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. We've talked about it. We understand people are moving there. I don't blame them. It's a business-friendly tax environment with no personal or corporate or state income taxes. It's growing. Reivers, you were just there. You love the downtown.
It's a very, very cool downtown.
Cost of living is low. Well, maybe that's the, compared to here, what wouldn't be low, right? I said the word right. Oh, my God.
I know, right?
Contact the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. They'll straighten you out with all the information you need. Voted number one most affordable city by Empower. Voted number one best small city for business and careers by Forbes Magazine. It's a 300,000 population and growing. Yes?
I looked it up. It's called the Steel District. That's the area that I live. It's right on the river. That's where I, or I-
Is that where you're gonna live?
Might be.
Yeah.
It's beautiful, though. It's right on the river. It's really neat.
That would only make your commute about, what, 10 or 20 minutes longer than it is now?
Yeah, just next to 15, 20 minutes.
Sioux Falls has low business costs and a high quality of life. So, uh, no inheritance tax either. There's no limits to what your business can achieve. Find out more at siouxfallsdevelopment.com.
The earth is not your mother. The Joe Souchere Show.
I got a note from our buddy Stephen, the chief roaster and proprietor there at customroasting.net. Uh, rode the Harley to Alexandria to see my son for lunch, went to a town called Ferida and ate pizza at the Muddy Boot. It was very good and will likely be going back in the future. When I got home, here's the important part, pay attention, when I got home, I sprayed Bugs Be Gone on the windscreen, and after waiting a couple of minutes and wiping it clean, the bugs were gone. Now, I'm not sure, but is that synergy? I think that's, I, I don't know what synergy is, but if I had to guess, I would say that is synergy. One marketing partner giving a testimonial about another marketing partner. I know it happens a lot here at Garage Logic, that's for sure. Uh, Joe mentioned earlier, the weather has turned hot and miserable again this week.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Miserable. So that means the bugs are back, and the Bugs Be Gone will be needed all over again. Uh, so I'd keep a spray bottle in that daily driver until after Thanksgiving. And then you've got about a, a month there. Stock up, get a bunch of it. Give Bugs Be Gone as Christmas gifts. You'll get a funny look at Christmas, uh, but praise next summer when they're wiping those bugs clean. It's the easiest way to clean bugs and organic material from all surfaces. Safe on all surfaces. Another wonderful product from Sea Foam. We call it Bugs Be Gone.
Here's John Height.
Thank you, Joe. This news brought to you by North American Banking Company. A crash involving a school bus that was carrying kids brought a portion of Interstate 35W down to a single lane during the morning this morning. A crash happened in the southbound lanes of the interstate, just near County Road 10 in Moundsview, north of the new Brighton City border. Happened at about 10 to 8. Traffic cameras showed a school bus and a white car apparently damaged. The Minnesota State Patrol says a Chrysler sedan driving in the right-center lane was unable to stop when traffic in front of it slowed down. The Chrysler rear-ended a Nissan, then veered into the left corner lane when it was T-boned by a school bus.
Holy cow.
27 children onboard the bus at the time of the crash, according to the state patrol, but none reported any injuries at the scene other than some bumps and bruises. All were evaluated at school. The drivers of the Chrysler and the school bus were both taken to a hospital for treatment of injuries that are not considered life-threatening. The driver of the Nissan was not hurt. Officials say the investigation is still active. Traffic was backed up for several miles in the immediate aftermath. However, lanes have since reopened. Traffic back to moving normally.
Can I say something, um, maybe uncalled for, but I really had to contain myself this morning. Um, the Good Samaritans, who generally do very good work, and I really appreciate them, for some reason, took all the kids off the bus.
No.
And had them, they took them out of the back door because the regular door was blocked by a crash car. The bus was sitting sideways. Um, took them out of the back and then had them all standing on the shoulder-
No.
Of the freeway.
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
Keep them on the bus.
Yeah. Yeah, that was the safest spot. There were so many Good Samaritan cars parked between oncoming traffic, which was five miles an hour, and the bus, that there's no way those kids sitting on the bus could have seen any further harm. But I saw about 30 rescue vehicles at one point that responded to this.
Minnesota House Democrats chose Representative Zach Stevenson to replace slain DFL leader Melissa Hortman as head of the caucus in a private vote yesterday, selecting a close ally of Hortman's. Stevenson of Coon Rapids got his start in Minnesota politics, working on Hortman's campaigns, was elected to the House in 2018. He serves as the Democratic co-chair of the House Ways and Means Committee. As caucus leader, he'll guide House Democrats through the upcoming legislative session and through next year's election.
I think he'll make you miss Hortman.
There might be some more clarity, maybe, on Minneapolis City Council member Jeremiah Ellison's situation amid questions over his ability to juggle his job with the Harvard Fellowship. The council's committee of the whole is expected to talk about Ellison's ability to do both things during a meeting later on today. Ellison has told Five Eyewitness News he plans to continue fulfilling his council duties, where he earns nearly 110 grand.
By not going to any meetings.
The Lob Fellowship at Harvard pays around $57,000, and the rules say you must leave your normal job for a year. But Harvard says Ellison was granted an exception to continue both the fellowship and the job.
Oh, God, oh, man.
Other members of the council have supported Ellison's Harvard Fellowship.
Of course they have. They want the same scam.
Despite council rules not allowing elected members to vote or participate, uh, virtually. Last week, Minneapolis City Council President Elliot Payne said Ellison's situation requires, quote, "a conversation with the city council."
This Elliot Payne, uh, who was basically flown under the radar, he is really unimpressive. I don't know how he got to be council president.
My fellowship, I was fully vested.
Yeah, I know you were.
Every dime.
Ellison's counsel term- Apparently.
So I did a little investigating during the break there. It turns out that this, the city council agreeing to sue this property owner-
Yeah.
It might be the only thing they've accomplished in 2025.
Wow.
That's their alone accomplishment.
Halfway into September.
Yeah.
Minneapolis Fire Department said it had finished fire suppression operations and all crews and equipment had cleared from the scene of that big fire in northeast Minneapolis around 4:30 yesterday afternoon. A fire, if you're unfamiliar, broke out around 4:30 in the morning on Sunday in the 1500 block of Central Avenue near the railroad track. Firefighters faced a number of obstacles trying to put out the fire, including obstacles in the way, including power lines and locked gates and being far from fire hydrants. By 5:38 in the morning, four buildings had caught fire. MFD said on Monday, all the structures on fire had collapsed. Traffic on Central Avenue reopened after MFD cleared the scene. No one was hurt in the fire, and the burdened properties were turned over to the owner and property manager, part of Hempel Real Estate. The fire department said the property owner is responsible for the security and for tearing down the remnants of the buildings. The fire department says they're still working to try to figure out what caused that fire.
I smelled it Sunday morning.
Did you? You smelt it?
Did you have a Gwen Walls type of reaction?
Did you have the windows open? You wanted to smell some tires?
No, I wasn't thrilled. I wasn't thrilled.
Gotcha.
Star Tribune with an update on a story we talked about a while back. Officials confirming the human remains recovered from the Mississippi River in August are a match to Roy Ben, who went missing from central Minnesota nearly six decades ago. The Midwest Medical Examiner's Office identified the remains using DNA collected about seven years ago, when the Benton County Sheriff's Office conducted a review of the case. Officials at the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office continued to work to try to figure out the cause and manner of his death. Ben was a widower who lived in Sauk Rapids, was 59 when he vanished in September 1967. He owned an appliance repair store in St. Cloud. He had purchased a 12-unit apartment building in Sauk Rapids about six weeks before he went missing. Reports from the Times say he was last seen evening of September 24th at the popular King's Supper Club, wearing a dark suit with a red tie, a white French-cuffed shirt, and golden pearl cuff links. It was later determined he was last seen at about 4:00 AM the next day, eating breakfast at a cafe attached to a gas station on the east side of the Mississippi River in Sartell. Because he lived alone, Ben was not reported missing right away. The first story about his disappearance appeared later in September on the 28th. It was estimated Ben could have been carrying five grand with him. That's the equivalent of about $48,000 today. Acquaintances called Ben comfortably well-off, with no unhappy life or debts to walk away from. People who knew him, according to a 1975 story in the St. Cloud Times, said he always carried a substantial amount of money. On August 9th, Watkins resident Brody Loke had stumbled upon what looked like a vehicle about 24 feet below on the bottom of the Mississippi River. It was his first time fishing with his new Garmin Forward Facing Sonar model. Loke returned to the spot just north of the Sartell Dam and close to the western shore of the river on Sunday morning that week to get a second look, and then called police. On August 13th, authorities dredged up Ben's 1963 metallic blue Buick Electra, which was half-full of sediment, along with a set of human remains and several items that belonged to Ben.
Any cash?
Speaking of that-
That would deteriorate.
Well, he said substantial amount. Would this qualify as a substantial? I got 21 bucks. Is that a substantial amount of money?
You're gonna need all that.
I saw you perk up when John mentioned a cafe attached to a gas station. Did you have something pictured in your mind's eye?
I always do. I would not have anticipated that it would have been very good.
I'm seeing chrome stools-
Oh, yeah.
Swivel stools with red, what would that material be?
Vinyl.
Yeah, red vinyl.
Speckled with silver.
Yeah. Kind of a red countertop.
Yeah.
A waitress that calls everybody honey.
Yeah, she's got some kind of wrap in her hair.
Yeah, and a lot of cigarettes.
Oh, yeah, a lot of smoke.
What do you see adjacent to the spindle order, you know, where you get all the orders?
Oh, right.
What's, what's next to there, sitting under glass?
Donuts?
Pastries.
Pastries, yes.
Pastries.
Pastries, donuts, a pie.
Pie.
Yes.
I also see you two on a road trip, and you're pulling in to refuel the car, and you kind of give Joe the nod, and you say, "Should we go on in and grab a bite?"
Let's go see Flo.
And there's a guy with a paper hat. He's scraping the grill.
He's the chef.
He's scraping the grill.
It was 1967, so he might have had a big cigar hanging out of his mouth.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Let me have a Diablo sandwich and a Dr. Pepper. Step on it. I'm in a hurry.
Against one wall was a cigarette machine.
Oh, yeah. Somebody buying it. Ching, ching, ching.
Twenty-five cents.
Why don't we take a break here and hear from Mr. Reivers?
Thank you, Johnny, and I want to welcome a brand-new marketing partner here to Garage Logic. I just started this a little under a week ago. It's called Awaken180. It's been a couple of days. I am already down four pounds, ladies and gentlemen. That's right. It's the weight loss program that works for everyone. I'm not obese, but I could drop a couple of pounds.
You're a moron.
You're a big boy. I'm a big boy. But it's a proven weight loss program that's built for everybody. There's no medications involved, no workouts are required, or fasting. You eat to lose weight. It boosts your metabolism. So it's a solution that's worked for over 10 years and also over 800,000 people revolutionizing the weight loss industry. Here's how it works. It's pretty simple. There's a clear daily plan. There's no complicated tracking or counting. You get one-on-one weekly coaching. In fact, I just had my call with Emma this morning. She's amazing, and she holds me accountable, and it's pretty great. Your coach can even help you pick out restaurant menu items if you're going out to eat, or maybe you're going to a wedding. It's pretty cool. And the at-home program is available, and it's really, really easy to keep track of if you're on the go. You've got kids like I do. You're always busy. It's awesome. So go to awaken180weightloss.com. That's awaken180weightloss.com. Or you can schedule your consultation today by dialing 844-346-1800, or again, awaken180weightloss.com. And please do me a favor and mention that you heard about him on the Garage Logic podcast.
This is Patrick Ricey for The Canopy Group. As you set out to explore Minnesota this summer, just know this. There are 234 cities in Minnesota with populations over 2,500. The Canopy Group has customers in all but seven of those. Why is this fact important? Because The Canopy Group's experience in these Minnesota cities gives them a unique edge in providing you the comprehensive home and auto insurance options you want. Remember, The Canopy Group offers 16 insurance companies for a reason, to help match your specific situations, including your ZIP code, with an insurance company that meets your needs. This is done for you every year because your specific situation may change. It is also true that the insurance company's appetites that you're with now might change as well. The experience working throughout Minnesota provides thousands of Canopy Group customers with peace of mind, knowing that The Canopy Group is working for you. To learn more, visit thecanopygroup.com today.
Here's a man who spends hours in hardware stores, sifting through the nuts and bolts of life, Joe Souchere.
Those of you looking for a ray of hope, look no further than Garage Logic and one of their sponsors, the Minnesota Masonic Charities, online at mnmasonicharities.org. I tell you what, they're talking about all the great things that we can do in our, just our wonderful communities, so to speak, being civil. So if you want to learn more about the Civility Project that they have at Minnesota Masonic Charities, they're certainly happy to tell you all about them. And the Civility Project is rooted in profound principles. It incorporates fun elements like etiquette tips, the do's and don'ts of social interactions. These aspects not only entertain, but they also engage the core message of so many. And we know they've been slipping away for quite some time, so let's get back on track. Learn more about the Civility Project at mnmasonicharities.org. They'll have some scattered around a couple of months and here and there and everywhere, but you'll be able to get the schedule on the website. Remember, civility is such a great thing for our community to have, and you know what? We're losing it. So let's get it back with Minnesota Masonic Charities, mnmasonicharities.org. Check them out online. Let them know you heard it on the Garage Logic podcast, and let's just be civil. And you can get back on track with Minnesota Masonic Charity's Civility Project.
In national and international news, from the mid-east, Palestinian attackers opened fire at a bus stop during the morning rush hour in Jerusalem, killing six people, wounding another 12, according to Israeli officials. An Israeli soldier and civilians who were at the scene shot and killed the two attackers, according to police, who later arrested a third person in connection with the shooting. Meanwhile, Israel carrying out an attack targeting Hamas leadership in Qatar on Tuesday in an unprecedented strike on a key mediator in the Gaza conflict that threatened to derail renewed peace efforts. Senior Israeli officials told CNN, among those targeted, Hamas chief negotiator Khalil Al Hayya. The Qatari Foreign Ministry spokesperson Majid El Ansari said the attack targeted residential buildings housing several members of the Hamas political bureau in Doha. Department of Homeland Security announcing yesterday it has ramped up immigration raids in Chicago. The crackdown, called Operation Midway Blitz, comes amid a Supreme Court ruling allowing a similar operation in Los Angeles. Immigration efforts in Chicago come as President Trump had promised to defy Governor J.B. Pritzker and deploy the National Guard. The court ordered 6-3 yesterday in that Los Angeles ruling that they will overturn a federal judge's order blocking the LA raids. The judge had accused the government of violating Fourth Amendment protections, requiring reasonable suspicion in order to make arrests, and barred authorities from using race and ethnicity, among other factors, to conduct arrests. While yesterday's ruling was unsigned, Justice Brett Kavanaugh penned a concurring opinion that demographics supported the crackdown, saying roughly 10% of LA's population is in the country illegally. Another Supreme Court Justice, Sonia Sotomayor, blasted the Supreme Court's decision. In a dissent, she said the court was giving the Department of Homeland Security a green light to seize anyone who looks Latino. Sotomayor called the order unconscionable and said it made Latinos throughout the region fair game. The man charged with trying to assassinate Donald Trump while he played golf last year in South Florida stood before a group of potential jurors in the courtroom yesterday and said he was, quote, "Sorry for bringing you all in here." Ryan Ruth, wearing a gray sports coat, red tie with white stripes, and khaki slacks, is representing himself-
Wasn't he the guy that hid behind a tree? Just a very thin tree? Didn't even, you know, this guy was kind of a-
Sucking it in like this.
Low-rent attempter.
I'm seeing a foghorn leghorn.
Yeah. I'll say, I'll say, boy.
You could see his gut on the other side of the tree.
That boy's gonna need a slide rule to find me in here. He comes up with a slide rule and finds him right up.
During a hearing to go over questions that would be asked of jurors, Ruth was partially shackled. He did not appear to be restrained, though, in first of three batches of 60 potential jurors were brought into the courtroom. The judge dismissed questions Ruth wanted to ask jurors as irrelevant. And those included asking jurors about their views on Gaza, the talk of the US acquirer in Greenland, and what they would do if they were driving and saw a turtle in the road.
Well, that's, that's all you need to know. Did this guy even have a gun?
He had a gun.
He had a gun.
He had a soap.
Soap. Hiding behind a tree, but the trunk of the tree was very narrow.
Actually, I think that turtle question, I don't know. I think that's legit, man. There's nothing-
He likes turtles.
Nothing makes me more angry than people pulling over to try to save wildlife.
Well, see, but we don't know. He might have wanted you to pull over.
The GOP-led House Oversight Committee says it's obtained the documents and communications from the Jeffrey Epstein estate on Monday, including the Epstein birthday book, which is said to contain the letter that President Donald Trump allegedly signed for Epstein's 50th birthday in 2003.
Come on. Trump said somebody else could have written that and just signed his name.
Okay, but I will say this about our president. I don't see him putting boobs or a women's figure.
I do.
You do?
Yeah, he sold a lot of that for charity stuff in New York when he was in the Playboy mode.
Va, va, vo.
Yeah.
238 PDF doc-
You mean the stuff I drew when I was in third grade?
Right.
That kind of stuff?
Boobs.
Boobies. I think we called them boobies.
The side boob that had like the upper, like the nipple was pointing up the door.
But he drew good boobs.
He did.
He knew what was going on.
That's a connoisseur.
He knew what he was doing.
You've got a lot of issues with the president, but boy, he can draw.
That's right. I think he was a hell of a boob draw.
The 238-page PDF document of the birthday book includes a prologue that says it was written by Ghislaine Maxwell. "Contributors are divided into categories: family, Brooklyn, girlfriends, whose names are all redacted, children, whose names are also redacted, friends, science, special assistants, all redacted, and business." Donald Trump is listed among the contributors under the friends category. That also includes Leon Black, Bill Clinton, Ellen Dershowitz, Henry Jarecki, George Mitchell, Joel Pashkow, Leslie Wexler, Morton Zuckerman, and others. As you guys said, Trump has denied writing the letter, calling it fake. The president has also denied the existence of the letter, filing a $10 billion defamation lawsuit against the Wall Street Journal for Ruth's report. Dow Jones, the parent company of the Wall Street Journal, in response to the lawsuit, said in a statement, "It has, quote, 'full confidence in the rigor and accuracy of its reporting and will vigorously defend against any lawsuits.'"
Here's what this story has done. Reivers, who do the Vikings play next week?
They host the Atlanta Falcons.
That's a Sunday night game.
Sunday night game.
All right.
Oliver North and his loyal former Secretary Fawn Hall apparently-
I remember Fawn.
Yeah, Red Ed.
I don't think so. I think she was blonde.
What?
They got married last month.
Really?
Forty years after their leading roles in the infamous Iran-Contra affair.
They really took their time, didn't they?
Well, there's, there's reasons.
It's a courting process.
A copy of the couple's marriage license obtained by journalist Michael Issikoff shows that the 81-year-old North and the 65-year-old Hall were married in Arlington County, Virginia, August 27th. North, a retired Marine Corps lieutenant colonel, was a member of President Reagan's National Security Council, when in the late 80s, he was accused of facilitating illegal weapons sales to Iran. The scheme was aimed at encouraging Iran-backed militants in Lebanon to release American hostages. While proceeds from the arms sales were diverted to support the contra rebels in Nicaragua, that was prohibited under the Boland Amendment. Hall, who's North's secretary at the NSC, was granted immunity by prosecutors investigating the case, as she revealed that she destroyed, altered, and hid evidence implicating North and others in illegal activity.
Forget all that stuff. Why did it take so long for him to get married?
What's going on?
Well, she was, or he was married, let's see, let me go down here. For 56 years, he was married.
Oh, for Pete's sake.
His wife died.
Oh.
Okay, and she was married, I don't know if you guys know or are familiar with Danny Sugarman?
Yeah.
Yeah. Danny Sugarman was the manager-
Doors.
Of the Doors, yeah.
Oh, for Pete's sake.
She was married to Danny Sugarman until he died in 2005. Now, when North's wife died, she went to the funeral, and that's where they reconnected.
Fawned?
Yeah, fawned. They hadn't seen each other.
They lit up again, huh?
I think rekindled, right?
Rekindle would be the word, John. You're right.
Do you think they hooked up over open-faced sandwiches and bland coffee, kind of in the back room there, where they keep the extra suits?
The North Hall wedding described as low-key.
I bet it was, John.
None of North's four kids attended. North and Hall did not respond to the-
None of his kids went?
Request for comment. None of his kids went.
Too soon, huh?
John, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I think it's all-
A little different than what Taylor and Kelsey are probably gonna have as a wedding.
Right, interesting.
We are gonna break that down, right? Taylor?
At some point, we're gonna have to.
Public, wedding, private.
I mean, it's the biggest story going.
Well, it's the NFL turning into a reality TV show.
We could actually have a guest on in that regard, and maybe-
You know, the center of the American experiment-
Yeah.
Has, is really trying to get their, you know-
Act together.
No. They're trying to point out that education in this state is in big, big trouble.
People should get their act together.
Half the kids can't read or do math at grade level, and they point out, everything's been tried. Most famously, we've continued to try more and more money. That doesn't work. Top-heavy administrations, doesn't work. The center of the American experiment is calling it 7K for Kids. You have control, parents of your own destiny. You could pick whatever school you want to send your kid to, whether it's public, private, charter, homeschool, whatever works. You should be in control, not Governor Cockwamble and his union of state teachers, top-heavy teachers that don't accomplish anything. Find out more at 7kforkids.com or theamericanexperiment.org.
It's the end of the world as we know it, and he feels fine. Joe Souchere.
Let's talk about my friends at North American Banking Company. You know, they have spent time investing in the people, businesses, and organizations that make the Twin Cities a great place to live. And you get that feeling when you walk into any one of their six Twin Cities locations, whether it's Roseville, 50th and France, Hastings, Woodbury, Shoreview, and Maple Grove. And listen, they understand that there's no shortage of banking options here in the Twin Cities. So if you're tired of just being a number to-
So if you're tired of just being a number to your big national bank, then do me a favor and be sure to check out my friends at North American Banking Company, offering all of the same services as those big other national banks, whether you're looking to buy a home, maybe finance a new home renovation project, or perhaps get that new car that you've been dreaming about, they can help you out. And their experts are here to take care of you, your family, and your business. And they've been at it since 1998, when they made a promise to deliver a better banking experience for their customers. So your first step can be checking them out online today, it's nabanco.com to learn more. Once again, it's banking done differently. North American Banking Company, member FDIC, is an equal housing lender.
Joe? You know this guy who killed the woman, the Ukrainian refugee on the train in Charlotte?
Yes.
His name is DeCarlos Brown, Jr., 34, and the judge who let him off is a magistrate judge named Teresa Stokes. And finally, this story is gaining some purchase, it's gaining some exposure, and people are, I think with some justification, holding her accountable in great measure for releasing him. But I was reading that she released him in January after he promised to appear when he was summoned back, but he was arrested on charges of misusing the 911 system. So on the one hand, there she is, thinking, is it really worth putting this guy in a slammer for failure to, for, you know, following up a 911 call on a police welfare check? And obviously, as many judges might reach that conclusion, no, it wasn't. But what, what, what might concern you is she could have taken that opportunity to put him away based on his record.
Right.
And I don't know the, I don't know if that's fair play in the judicial system. You know, when you're brought in on such a minor charge, you get to say, well, they got Al Capone on income tax evasion, didn't they? Really, what they want him for was murdering and murdering and murdering. But this guy had a record for a long, long time, just a terrible record.
Did you see the quote from this gentleman's mother?
No.
She said, "He should not have been out."
Right.
He should have been locked. This is the guy's mother that said that.
But see, the people we have in place in these situations are judges. They've, they've got to make a call here. We had the judge right here in St. Peter, Gunderson, who let the kid off who threatened to kill a woman at Gustavus Adolphus, because at 19, his brain really wasn't ready. You know, it's all BS, judges. I mean, you had a chance here, Teresa Stokes. And again, I don't know what the, what the, what the protocol is. He was arrested on a 911 abuse, and, and she, maybe, I don't know how she could not have been aware of his record, but in any event, she let him go. And of course, he didn't fulfill the promise to return when, when he was told to. So that, and then one of these days, we gotta wrestle with this whole idea of mental illness being excused for everything.
Right.
When it comes time to point the trigger, for example, the Annunciation Crackpot knew it was wrong, otherwise he wouldn't have written in his writings, "I apologize," you know, beforehand, "I know what I'm causing this grief." Well, then, well then, what's mental, why did you do it then? You knew right from wrong, you idiot.
You were saying enough to know.
Yeah. Only because they come to us all the way from South Africa, Marloth Park in Pumalanga Province, South Africa, from the traveling Limons at worldwidewaftage.com. Well, it was on this day.
Joe, today is September 9th.
On this day in 1849, a group of Hochunk, the Winnebago, unhappy with the new Long Prairie Reservation in Minnesota, attempted to return to their homeland in Wisconsin. Troops from Fort Snelling blocked their movements near St. Paul. So what era, era should we go back to in history? Okay. On this day.
On September 9th.
In 1861, the steamboat Alhambra, towing a barge, carrying railroad track cars and the locomotive William Crooks, arrived in St. Paul. Operation of William Crooks, the first, the first steam locomotive in the state, began on June 28, 1862, with a trip to St. Anthony. The locomotive, named for the chief engineer of the St. Paul and Pacific Railroad, now rests at the Lake Superior Railroad Museum in Duluth. On this day.
How did you arrive, sir?
Locomotive.
Steamboat.
Yes.
On this day.
September 9th.
In 1863, in Faribault, five students attended the first classes held at the Minnesota School for the Deaf.
What?
Yeah. On this day.
Thank you, John.
Well, it was so pathetic.
I was thinking about going, huh?
Yeah. On this day.
Chris handled it.
On this day.
September 9th.
In 1884, a tornado struck the lumber mill at Marine on the St. Croix. It blew away a million board feet of cut lumber.
Wow.
Wow.
You know, when, growing up, we would.
I have a couple more of these.
Scrimmage the school for the deaf in football.
Oh, how's that?
Well, we had an unfair advantage because their snap count was this big drum.
Oh.
So we knew exactly when the ball was gonna be. Of course not, no, we would never, we would never do anything like that.
Well, how could they hear the drum?
They saw the motion.
Ah.
And so that was the signal.
So they're all looking over at the sideline? Oh my God, what a clown, I would have loved to see that.
Why didn't the quarterback just stamp his feet?
Well, you know, we're youth, we're not.
Yeah, what were the cheers like?
On this day.
I bet they weren't in unison, were they?
On this.
They were very quiet cheers.
On this day. On this day.
Yes.
In 1903, Judge Charles E. Flandreau died in St. Paul. Settler colonists admired him for his role in the defense of New Ulm during the US-Dakota War of 1862.
I bet that was Flandreau Street.
On this day.
September 9th.
In 1933, Joe Hauser hit two home runs for the Minneapolis Millers Minor League Baseball team, setting an American Association record of 69 homers for the season. Hauser had also set the International League record mark at 63 with Baltimore Orioles in 1930. Well, please tell me Joe Hauser played in the majors.
I think we do this every year.
I think we need to verify it. We need to verify it. Joe Hauser had to play in the majors. He had 69 home runs in the AA, and he hit.
How's the last name spelled? Because is he related to Dick Hauser?
H-A-U-S-E-R.
It's like Tom. Oh, okay. He was in the majors briefly, well, not briefly.
A cup of coffee?
Hit 284 career.
Today, he'd be a trillionaire.
80 home runs career, 356 RBIs.
That's a pretty good run.
Well, he wasn't in the major leagues enough. The guy hit 69 home runs for the Millers in an International League record with 63 with the Baltimore Orioles.
I have other news for you about Mr. Hauser.
Yeah.
He was in the major leagues before he set any of those minor league records.
Wow.
He played in the majors from 1922 to 1929, and never, and never made it back, so.
How could he not make it back after these home run records?
Why are you yelling at me?
Damn it, I want an answer to the show.
Why is it John's fault?
Why is it my fault?
Sports disappointment on this day.
On September 9th.
I don't know why this is a disappointment. On this day in 1989, the Timberwolves held their first Hoop Fest featuring Rick Mahorn.
Oh, you know why that is?
I don't.
Because he never showed up to play. He demanded that they drafted him.
Oh.
And he never showed up.
I remember Rick.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, GLers.
Right, thank you.
I think what we need to have, though, coming up, like yesterday's game, where a positive in Minnesota sports history.
Well, there ain't many of them.
No, there's, maybe not, maybe it's a bad idea.
On this day, Joe's be a dollar for that game.
All I do is write, I do.
Hey, speaking of that, why don't you download, not download, hit subscribe on the Garage Logic YouTube channel? Did you know that Garage Logic has a YouTube channel? You sure do. And you can watch the show each and every single day, and you can comment live while you're doing so. Just search Garage Logic on YouTube and search Garage Logic on all of our social media platforms. Thank you, sir.
There's a lot of interaction today on YouTube.
Gonna buy me a big can of Mountain Dew.
Louis, Louis.
Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, and also sign up for the Daily Logician. That's an email that comes right to your inbox each and every single day, and it includes the most recent episode of the podcast.
I saw the end of your stupid shows on TV.
Time once again to check in with our guy, Mr. Money Talk, Josh Arnold, is with us once again, right here in Garage Logic, and now is the time for you to do the same, so do not delay. Do exactly what I did and pick up that phone and dial 952-925-5608. That number once again is 952-925-5608. When you call that number, you're going to get Josh, and he is there for you for that free, yes, I did use the word free, 48-minute financial consultation with absolutely zero obligation, and he will always give you the straight talk. He will never give you the sugar-coated advice, and he is on the line with us once again, right here in Garage Logic. And boy, oh, boy, Josh, the Vikes had a big comeback win last night. Do you think Apple's gonna have a comeback win as well?
Well, it's not even the fourth quarter, that is for sure with Apple. It's not the fourth quarter. Heck, it might not even, well, it's beyond the first quarter, but Apple has a huge day today with the introduction of their new product lineup. They should be later today introducing three new phones, the regular phone, Pro Phone, and supposedly an ultra-thin phone, plus talk about artificial intelligence, update their, I just call them earbuds, but their earbuds, and introduce some new watches. And there's talk about what Apple's going to be doing with artificial intelligence, as well as Apple TV and Apple TV Plus. Should be a very exciting meeting and product introduction. Typically, these things can be a sell-the-news event, but the sell-the-news has been happening since yesterday in anticipation. And I'm sure that there are many people that are going to be somewhat disappointed if Apple doesn't talk about any updates for Siri and how Siri's going to integrate AI. But I am of the belief that should constitute another move up in terms of products, we'll say, product enhancements, particularly with the ultra-thin model, which should attract some, we'll say, some up-cycle buyers. Most people I have found have held on to their iPhones just because of how good they are for three, four, five years more or longer. But if I look at the number of people who actually own iPhones, and not just iOS devices, iOS device holders are about two and a half billion on a worldwide basis, and I think two-thirds of that is iPhone users, even on a five-year upgrade cycle, could mean that Apple could sell up to, we'll say, 300 million phones each year. And for each phone that's upgraded, more services are going to be added. Apple has also not increased their prices on iPhones, you know, for the last five years, and you could see an announcement of an increase in, in prices. To me, however, the, the bigger news took place last, last week with the ruling in the Google antitrust case that allowed Google to continue paying Apple to be the default search engine. I think this opens up some competition for other players to pay to use Apple's real estate and pay to have access to Apple's two and a half billion iOS users in the form of, let's say, OpenAI, which has ChatGPT, or Google's Gemini product for artificial intelligence, or Anthropic's product, or Perplexity's product, or even Elon Musk's XAI product called Grok, paying Apple to be a default or default for AI on the platform. And that's not to prevent Apple from designing or upgrading Siri for better, for better inquiries. So that, to me, is, or has the potential to generate additional revenues, you know, for Apple's services business. Apple, by the way, has, you know, been increasing their, their margins over time, which for, for a company that is primarily hardware-focused, is quite significant. And I also believe that Apple continues to surprise analysts and frustrate the naysayers, though the naysayers continue to get a lot more press in their story, sometimes sounds a lot more convincing than the negatives. I still have my $300 price targets over time on Apple, but it is not going to go in a straight line up. Meantime, the market is also looking at jobs, jobs data, and the annual revisions numbers came out, and that showed a weakening or a much weaker jobs picture over the, over the last, the last year, which extended back into the, well, we'll just say it extended back backwards. This could give the Fed, when they meet next week, some additional ammunition, ammunition to start cutting interest rates, and hopefully they do not go overboard, which would be seen as a negative. So that is a macro, we'll say, a macro event that we'll find out more about next week. Do be prepared, as we have said continually, for a lot more volatility in the month of September and into October, as has been a traditional, and we maintain our asset allocation model of keeping up to 30% in cash, both for safety and opportunity, and the balance invested in companies that are focused on the internet leisure and real assets.
Excellent advice, as always, Mr. Money Talk. You heard him, GLers. Now is the time for you to pick up the phone and to make the call for that free 48-minute financial consultation with absolutely zero obligation, and you do that just like I did by dialing 952-925-5608, where you always get straight talk and never, ever sugar-coated advice. Josh, once again, thank you so much for the time and the chat. Enjoy the rest of your day, and we'll talk to you again tomorrow.
Investment services offered by Josh Arnold Investment Consultant LLC, a security investment advisor. Past performance is no guarantee of future results. All investments involve risk. All comments and opinions are Josh Arnold's and do not constitute investment advice.
Chris Reivers is a paid endorser.